Good evening. Welcome to this evening's City Daily City Recreation Meeting for February 27th. And also, for those wishing to address the Recreation Commission on any item on the agenda or under public appearance or oral communication.
February 27th. Also, for those wishing to address the Recreation Commission on any item on the agenda or under public appearance or oral.
Please complete a speaker card located at the entrance of the City Council Chambers and submit it to staff members early in the meeting as possible. Also, persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the Department of Library and Recreation Services as soon as possible prior to the meeting. At this time, I'd like to have everyone rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
Hello, roll call, Joseph.
If we had a quorum, the next item of business would be roll call. But seeing that there's only two of the five commissioners, we don't have a quorum tonight, so we don't have an official meeting. But since you're here, Denise is here, we'll do an informational presentation. If during our presentation, we attain a quorum, we'll call the meeting to order at that point.
Okay, sounds good. And so we go through the normal steps as we were having.
I would go straight into the reports. And then if we get a quorum, then we'll back up.
Okay. All right. Then we'll lead with the director's report. So go ahead, Joseph.
And I'd like to introduce Ms. Denise Brown, our Recreation Services Manager, who's going to tell you about the wonderful 2018 summer camp program that we have for the youth of Daly City. Denise Brown.
Thank you, Joseph. Good evening, Commissioners. Evening. It's nice to be back.
Good to see you.
Among all of you. And so in 2018, as Joseph has stated, we have a great variety of summer camps and the Summer Youth Recreation Program. And you have in front of you the camp guide. And the camp guide kind of explains all of the different programs that we have and a little bit of verbiage on what each camp or Summer Youth Recreation Program has in it. And then on the back, which is where I'm going to stay focused on, it has all of the camps at a glance and all the weeks that we provide the camps or the Summer Youth Recreation Program. So in the aquatics area, there's two camps. One's the Aqua Camp, and that serves the six to 12-year-olds. And then there's a Guard Start Camp, which serves 11- to 14-year-olds. Both, obviously, the kids are in the water most of the time, but they do take field trips here and there. And specific, the Guard Start Camp Program focuses on, it's called the American Red Cross Guard Start, and it focuses on basic knowledge and skills needed to prepare for a lifeguard class. And that's kind of where we start to filter in those kids that might have some interest in possibly being the next lifeguards for us. So that camp gives them a little opportunity to understand lifeguard courses, and maybe they want to pursue, you know, a position with us in the department. That's one of the feeder areas. And then the other area of opportunity is the Summer Youth Recreation Program. And that one serves, it's kind of broken now. It serves, broken apart. The basic program, the Summer Youth Recreation Program, serves six to 10-year-olds. And then what they call the Explorers Program serves 11- to 14-year-olds. We, it, the Explorers Program, there's four locations for the Summer Youth Recreation Program. Two of them are smaller sites at March Bank and Hillside, and two of them are larger sites at Gellert and Westlake Parks. So at those two locations, the Explorers Program is flourishing. But at the other two locations, those 11- to 14-year-olds are just regular kids within the program. But the Explorers is another feeder program into what we call our volunteer, Volunteen Leadership Program. And those are 14- to 18-year-olds who have a desire to possibly be a recreation leader or a recreator, but maybe don't want to get paid for it. And so they're giving their time to be volunteering for the program. And there's a little cost involved in that as well. The enrichment programs that are offered, there's two new camps this year. The Theater Kids Camp has been with us for the last, I believe, three to four years, and that serves five- to 12-year-olds. Then there's a new camp called Minecraft Mania and the Slime Squad. And both of those camps are put on by this organization called Challenge Island. So kids learn how to make slime, which I don't know if anybody's ever attempted that, but there's basically three ingredients, and it's just really slimy. And then the Minecraft is more focused on the digital world of Minecraft in real-world steam action for kids. So those two, Minecraft Manias and Slime Squad are both for six- to 12-year-olds. And we're looking forward to having kids participate in something new and something enriching and something not sports-related. So those are the three areas with enrichment. And then the final area is the sports area. And we have, as you can see, quite a few different sports camps going on. The Cheer Camp is for five- to 13-year-olds. Soccer Camp is for five- to 12-year-olds. The Volleyball Camp is for six- to 14-year-olds. Baseball Camp is eight- to 13-year-olds. And the Basketball Camp is for six- to 14-year-olds. And the All Sports Camp is for a six- to 14-year-old as well. And those, again, are focused on all the sports that everybody, you know, loves to play. And then All Sports Camp kind of takes in all the different sports, from the ones that I listed, as well as dodgeball and I think there's a little tennis involved. So the different prices, they range mostly from probably $200 to $300. And they all are, the sports camps are all contracted, as well as the enrichment camps. They're contracted with different instructors. The aquatics and the Summer Youth Recreation Program are all of our staff running the programs. So feel free to pick up any one of our summer camp guides at any one of our community centers or our main office. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, great.
It's also available online?
It is. www.dalyacity.org.
And again, they can all register online for this.
You can register online. You can register at the office. And just have fun this summer. Be part of Daly City's super summer fun.
Yeah, it's very involved, and quite a few selections for the community's children to get involved. But thank you, Denise and staff. Okay. Any questions?
No.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. And on to the next point, on the Westmore Park.
Westmore Park in Clubhouse, the agenda item, past, present, and future. So for those of you who are not familiar with Westmore Park, it's adjacent to Westmore High School. And it actually was kind of conceived in discussions back in 1958. Property is owned by the school district, what the Jefferson Union High School District. And before the high school was built and before the streets and homes were built, they were laying the area out. And let's get into this. That's the footprint. And that's an aerial photo from probably about 10, 15 years ago, when there was still a baseball court and tennis courts there. I mean, excuse me, baseball field and tennis courts. So let's dive into it. 1958, the city and Jefferson School District started having discussions about property. They were planning to build Westmore High School, and their property extended pretty far out. And the city had its eye on some of the property, too, to have a recreation facility. And also, the future home would be the future home of what became and is today Fire Station Number 95. So during those discussions, the city entered into negotiations and acquired the land that the fire station now sits on for $11,718. It was appraised at a little over $9,000, and I don't know why. I was, I read through a lot of documents. And some of it's, there's some holes in the history. And one of them is, that property was assessed at about, appraised, I should say, at about $9,500. The city offered $11,718. I cannot tell you why such an odd number, but that is the price the city paid for the dirt under the property, or the property that became Fire Station Number 95. The rest of the property that the city eyed, the school district didn't want to sell, but they were interested in developing it for recreation purposes with the, for the city to operate. And so rather than sell about nine acres over there, they decided to do a long-term lease, a 50-year lease. And that was effective back in May of 1959. And if you do the math in your head, Denise is really good at this, 50 years from 1959 would put us right about 2,009. So, so the city got the rights to use the land, and it was, it was completely un, it wasn't graded. It was, it was full of debris and stuff. And so the city contracted with the Henry Doulter Company to grade the property and clear it of debris so it can start planning what to do with it. So over the next few years, from 1959 up through middle part, 1961, the city started putting in improvements. And you saw what that looks like, you know, baseball diamonds, tennis court, and a clubhouse and a parking lot there. And so really, even though the city took control of that property in 1959, it was not really made a park until about 1961. So we did all sorts of things. And if you talk to rec leaders who were around back in the day, we, we had rec leaders at that site running youth baseball programs and tennis. And it was one of our Summer Youth Recreation Programs up to and including last year. So the 50-year lease expired, as I said, in June of 2009. The city and the school district got together, and the school district was willing to extend it by five years. Nothing longer than that. So because of the future not being very certain, in fact, I would say was uncertain, the clubhouse and the tennis courts and the baseball fields started to be a little bit neglected. And over the next five years from that extension to June of 2015, we continue to operate there. And our maintenance folks, you know, they would repair the backstop of the baseball field. But we weren't doing a lot of programming out there, other than the Summer Youth Recreation Program. And so really, the intense use out there has been mostly as a dog-walking space. The clubhouse has been used up to and including this past weekend. There was actually a wedding in there. And we've used it for lifeguard training. The fire department has used it for firefighter training. Not intensely used by the community over the last five years. So when we sat down before the lease expired and wanted to renew again and continue operating, the school district surprised us a little bit. And they said, no, we've got plans for that property. We're not interested in renewing the lease. And in fact, Chair Pastor might remember, we actually did a presentation here about the $130 million capital project or program that the school was undertaking. And it was about the same time where they carved out this eight-acre parcel that they wanted to include. include as part of their long-term plans for maintenance facility. So that was sort of a Reader's Digest version of a 60-year history of Westmore Park, but we will no longer control that space. We don't have an agreement. They did sort of a wink and a handshake and said, look, you guys can continue to do stuff out there, and when it's time, we'll, we'll ask you to leave. We met last week or the week before with a new operations person out there, and have kind of agreed that unless something drastic changes, probably May of this year, well, we'll walk away from it. They will take our locks off the clubhouse and put their locks on, and we are not offering any more programming. We're no longer leasing or leasing, renting the clubhouse or having any activity out there. So it was a nice 60-year run, but we are short one park in our system beginning this year. The space will probably remain open to the public and as open space for dog-walking until construction starts. That could be anywhere from a year to five years to 10 years, depending on how the rest of the capital project goes at the high school. If you haven't been out there, this is what it looks like today. In fact, this photograph was taken today. It's the baseball field, it's not been used for any organized baseball in a long, long There, it's hard to see, but that's the tennis courts, and Denise and I were out there recently. The tennis courts are completely unpayable, you know, they almost need to mow one of the courts. There's so many weeds growing up through the cracks, the nets are down, and it's just a big asphalt concrete slab out there. Now, the good news is, part of the high school's plans is they plan to build new tennis courts, not on this site, but up above by the parking lot. So at least there will still be some public tennis courts out there. These have not been used for many, many years. They're fenced off and locked, so I mean, you can hop the fence if you wanted to do something, but we don't encourage that, and there's no tennis going on out there. That's the clubhouse, and it's not, it's not exactly the crown jewel in our park system or clubhouses, but it is what it is, it's a little modular building out there. And there's the entrance sign, so it is our expectation that sometime in the next few months, our Public Works folks will remove the signage out there and will cease to occupy the space, and then will revert back to its owners, the Jefferson Union High School District. That's it in a nutshell. It's been a, been a long run, but it's not our property.
I know I have had a few games up there back in the day. And yeah, it's, sorry to see that kind of like move away from recreation's participation up there, but you know, times have come to where there may be other needs that the school district sees for that property. So for those, for all the times that we've had events out there, you know, it's great memories. Yeah.
And that's it for the presentation. If you have questions or comments.
Well, so are there any other sites kind of like on the same horizon mode?
This is the only park site that I am aware of that was not owned by the city.
Okay.
So the rest of them are under our control.
Okay.
Yeah, sometimes there's confusion about jurisdiction of San Bruno Mountain, so there's some state parkland out there and some county parkland. We don't actually have any parkland up on San Bruno Mountain, but the list of our other regular parks will stay in our control.
Okay. Hopefully to keep it open space.
Yeah, there's discussion about maybe looking for, because unfortunately, if you live in that neighborhood, I mean, the high school is a great facility. You've got the swimming pool there, and the football field and track, and you will have new tennis courts, but in terms of a little, you know, clubhouse or a little baseball diamond, there isn't anything else in that neighborhood. Part of what the high school is doing, in fact, they're doing it right now, they're totally rebuilding Westmore High School's baseball and softball fields, and it'll be a synthetic turf field. I'm not quite sure what their intentions are in terms of sharing that for community use, but that's going to be a huge improvement out there. And the poor, poor Westmore High School baseball team is playing every one of its 2018 games away. Not one home game, because they don't have a home field. Last year, they actually had already started tearing up the field, and we accommodated them. They played some home games at March Bank, and they played a couple of home games at Geller, but this year, they're just going to play all their games on the road in hopes to have a new baseball field by the time season starts in 2019.
Okay. Well, the future looks bright for the baseball field situation then. Great. Thank you again for the, the history on the Westmore Park and where we are with, going forward. And so no further questions on that. Moving on to item number three, street fair.
I just wanted, I was hoping your colleagues would be here, because you two have been participating in the meetings, and just to share with the community that this is something Mayor Manolo and Councilmember Glenn Sylvester really want to accomplish in the next year. And so we've had two preliminary meetings, and it sounds like we've, the group, the planning group is growing, and there's some consensus. We don't have an official date or location set, but there's been a lot of good brainstorming in the last two sessions we've had, and I want to basically put this as a placeholder for, to keep bringing up to the commission until we can hone in on a date and location, which I think may be something we talk about as soon as next month.
Okay.
Or possibly at the April meeting.
Right.
And I'm going to, if you want to share, you've participated in the discussions.
Just want to share that, you know, I've had a chance to participate in two, two meetings recently up at the council chambers, not in the council chambers, but the, the meeting room upstairs on the second level here in this building. And we found that there was like several sites that were on the table to look at, and for, for the idea of the availability to use different sites and control the closure of streets without impacting traffic too much, a couple sites started boiled down to a couple sites. And so it started out with the side of the small street called Los Olivos, up there near the top of the hill. And you know, most folks know that that's a street that snaps down from Mission Street towards the Bart Station for about a block and a half or so. But when we start to think about the different participants, vendors, and activities that were starting to generate from our, the group there at the meeting, we started to think of the idea of a little bit more usable space in terms of flat and easiness for the folks that are ADA situation, that we need to be compliant for, focused on possibly city center here as a possible site to consider. Because number one, as it was brought up by City Manager Pat Martel, we can, the city can control the closure of the streets a little bit more better in this proximity. And plus, in most of our minds there, it gave us several venues at this property to kind of like hold events. So that's where it adds. And lastly, one participant at the meeting raised that, who is experienced in street fairs, said that to do something along the lines of what we would like to do, we would need to factor in a budget. Okay, what was that budget? $50,000 is the budget that would, and I was, we were all thinking, okay, that may be on the low side, but she tossed out the figure of $50,000 to create that type of one-day event on a date that we still yet to decide to put forward. So that's where it was ended, and the message is, is that if there's more folks out in City of Daly City that would like to share some ideas with, with the steering group, you're more than welcome to join us at the meeting and to share those thoughts and ideas and brainstorming while, as we get closer to selecting a date. So that's about it, and hopefully we can get this thing going. But an energetic group. Yeah, so that's it.
And I'm sure we'll have more to report, either at a March meeting or the April meeting.
Okay. And this brings us to several dates on our, on our calendar that is coming up in, well, this week, this week, this is starting Thursday night, I guess. And so Joseph?
Sure.
Care to mention those?
Yes. Thursday, March 1st, beginning at 5:30, right here in these very chambers at City Hall, we will be celebrating the 13th Annual Women's History Month, and our featured speakers that evening will be Honorable Mayor Justin Manolo, along with San Mateo Chief of Police, Susan Mannheimer. And there'll be a program around those speakers, there'll be some light refreshments out in the rotunda, and then when that part of the program winds down, there will be a screening of a feature film, Hidden Figures, in this room. And that is free, it's open to the public, and we certainly encourage everyone to come down and support the event, support women's history, support women. And then this Saturday, March 3rd, we'll return to the Cerro Monte Center for Fun, Health, and Safety Fair, and that event also is free, open to the public. We'll be out there from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Among other things, we'll be promoting our, our summer camps and programs. And then on Thursday, March 22nd, it's the annual Senior Volunteer Awards, and that will be at Cafe Dolger, Thursday, March 22nd. I think the time is actually at 12:00 noon. But let me be very clear, this is for, we are honoring the volunteers. You're certainly welcome to come, not to eat, but if you want to come and help serve the seniors, it's the day that we recognize all the work they do and sort of turn the tables and wait on them for the day. It's, it's always a very well-attended event. It's a lot of fun. Later than the month of March, on Friday, March 30th, we are going to have 18 Spring Social at the Gemono Pool. And then on March 31st, Bring Fun Day returns to Policita Gym and Field at 10:00 a.m. And that is an event that we are assisted with, we have the assistance of the Daly City Host Alliance Club, and there's usually about 500 kids that participate in that event out on the, you know, if the weather's nice, we'll be outdoors on the soccer field there at Policita. And lastly, I'd like to mention that on Saturday, April 7th, back to Gemono Pool, there will be an Under the Sea family event from 12:30 to 2:30.
Great.
That's what's on the horizon. I'll add one more that's not on here, and that is on March 13th, the Daly City Public Library Associates' annual St. Patrick's Day Luncheon at the Colma Community Center from 11:30 to about 1:00.
Okay, great. And again, the time for that Colma Center event again is?
About 11:30 to 1:00.
Okay.
You do need RSVP. The lunch is free, but as they say, it's, there's no real free lunch, because once you're in the room, yeah, definitely try to get some donations there to help support the Daly City Public Libraries. It is the biggest fundraising event of the year for the Associates.
Great. Well, thank you, Joseph. Well, as we mentioned at the top of this meeting, this, because we don't have a quorum, this was an information event for the public and for this event tonight. But do we have any other questions that we'd like to raise before we close?
No, not at this time.
Okay. You know, I'd like to close this meeting in memory of the students of Marjorie Stonem Douglas in Florida, and in memory of their passing, and the ongoing students that are returning to school this week, and that your loss is in our prayers. So again, God bless you and what you do going forward. And that does end the meeting tonight, so you don't have to think adjourned, but that's it, folks.